So again, thank you everyone for being here, uh, being on online or watching from home. Um, and I sincerely apologize that, uh, it was originally slated to be at six thirty. And you know, I just messed it up. So, uh, we'll get started now. I'm sorry for those of you that have been sitting waiting. Um, but we'll get started right away. Uh, so this is the third, uh, informational session provided by the town to help prepare residents for, uh, a town meeting this weekend. Uh, the first was two weeks ago, it was featured the Coast Guard, um, the Coast Guard Design Development Advisory, uh, recommendation. Um, and then last week's was with the Board of Selectmen, uh, regarding the eminent domain issue. And tonight, uh, we get to go over pretty much everything else. Um, you know, I will say that before I get started, you know, I do want to say that, you know, this year's, uh, town meeting, uh, is a long one. It's probably the longest, um, warrant book that we've had. If you, uh, there's forty three articles and then there's thirty-two CPC articles, uh, you know, so we're, uh, twenty-two CPC articles. So we're at sixty-five total. Uh, that's more than, you know, we typically have. A lot of that is because of, uh, last year's town meeting being postponed to September and then trimmed down because of COVID. And we really wanted to eliminate non-essential articles. So you have, you know, twice as many or last year's CPC articles that didn't get taken up are bunched into this year's. Um, and then a number of citizen petitions and borrowing articles, um, that the town wanted to take on. So a lot to get through, um, but you know, we should, uh, if people join in these calls ahead of time, you know, it should help move the conversation a little bit faster. Um, I do also want to say a special thank you, um, to the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the CPC, the Planning Board, the Coast Guard Design, uh, Committee and anybody else that's been involved in this, um, process of getting things ready for town meeting. Um, there's been, like I said, a lot, uh, a lot to do over the last, uh, few months. And, um, it all comes, uh, is all coming to fruition this week. So, um, with that, I'll get started here. I'd like to start, uh, this meeting by kind of going over what to expect at town meeting. Um, also, you know, before I even get into that, I'm gonna go through these articles. The point of tonight is to really like, you know, uh, read through the articles. Try to explain the articles. If anybody has any questions, write them in the chat. Uh, like I said, we have a lot of articles to get through and I don't want, I don't want to keep you guys all night. But if, uh, I'll try to look at the chat like every five articles or so and try to answer questions as best as I can. I do want to try to keep the, um, conversation going, uh, so we can get through a lot of stuff. But you know, again, the point, the intent of this is to answer questions, to provide, uh, residents with as much information as possible. Um, so last year we had about eighty-five people come to town meeting. This year we're expecting eight hundred or so people coming to town meeting. Uh, you know, because of the two, um, biggest articles of Coast Guard Housing and Eminent Domain, plus we have a number of other, you know, citizen petitions and things of that nature that I talked about. So we have a massive tent that is already up at Flash Road Park. Uh, we continue to set up tomorrow and Friday. Um, folks will park either on the park side of Flash Road. Uh, or you can drive through the parking lot for drop-off. Uh, there's some handicap parking there and turn up into the school, uh, to park in the school lot, um, or on Castle Road. Uh, the meeting check-in starts at eleven AM. The meeting starts at twelve. As I mentioned, we have a lot of things to go on, uh, to get through. It's possible that, uh, the meeting will be continued until Sunday. Uh, what time we start on Sunday, I'm assuming it'll be, you know, either twelve or one o'clock. That really will be figured out Saturday and it really kind of depends on how much we get through, uh, on Saturday. Of course, everyone will have to, you know, wear a mask. We'll have, uh, you know, seats in pairs, three feet apart. Uh, sit with people from your household, uh, you know, um, try to keep your social dis- keep your distance from other people while walking in, uh, either through registration. Uh, when you go through registration, before I even, I almost want to get back before I get into the first article. When you go, go through the registration line, lines, which are the red lines right there in the parking lot. Um, there'll be three separate lines. You're gonna check in by last name. Uh, when you go through the check-in, you will receive a, uh, electronic voting device. Um, that electronic voting device is yours and you should, and you need to hold on to that. If you need to leave the meeting in the middle of the meeting and intend to come back, you'll have to go through a specific checkout line. Um, check out with your name, give your clicker back. And then when you come back in, you'll go through that same line to get your clicker back. Um, just to keep, to make sure that clickers are staying in the space, um, and that it's one clicker per person. Um, I already have a, I have a, a question already in the chat that there's a rumor that everyone should bring their own chair. Um, we have eight hundred chairs being provided. So, um, unless we go over that number, um, we shouldn't have an issue. But we should have, but eight hundred chairs will be, uh, laid out under the tent. There'll be a big screen right at the beginning, uh, right, right by the stage. So everybody can see, you know, even if you're in the way back, you'll be able to see what's happening up front. There'll be two delay screens further back in the tent. So people in the back that may have, um, you know, vision issues, they'll have two screens that they can look at from the back. Uh, so we're doing everything we can to, uh, provide a, a solid, um, space for people to, uh, pay attention and be able to contribute to the meeting. All right. So I'm gonna get right into it. Uh, the first, um, five articles here are pretty standard articles, uh, that are in every town meeting. Uh, the first one are, the first one is, um, twenty-twenty-one transfers. As I mentioned, we didn't do CPC last year. It's September Town Meeting. So we have, uh, the first article here will include a transfer of the current fiscal year we're in, funds to go towards administrative expenses of the CPC in the current fiscal year. That's the only one that's on the agenda for that. The next article is snow and ice. Uh, chapter forty-four, section thirty-three, thirty-one D, Finance Law for Municipalities, uh, states that we are able to over expend our appropriated amount in our snow and ice account. And then at typically what we do is after the winter time, when we get to town meeting in the spring, we will, uh, pay for all those, uh, expenses that went above the appropriation by transferring funds within the current fiscal year to pay off the expended amount that we use for this past years of snow and ice. Um, I don't have the exact number on offhand. We did spend, um, more this past year than we did in the, in the year before, um, but we have that accounted for. Prior year bills, section, uh, chapter forty-four, section sixty-four. This, uh, state law requires that if you have any bill from a previous fiscal year. So if we have a bill that is for twenty nineteen, um, it requires a town meeting vote to pay it out of a current fiscal year budget for a past fiscal year bill. And it's a forfeits threshold at annual town meeting in order to do that. Uh, Article four is the Salary and Classification Plan. This is the chart of classifications and salaries for the fiscal year starting July one twenty-one. Uh, and then Article five is the Compensation for Elected Officials. This is where the town approves how much our elected officials get paid. Um, the Article six, Omnibus. So a lot of work went into this budget, a lot of things to be proud of. Uh, we've done, um, a tremendous amount of work with the FinCom on maintaining our commitment of our financial goals for the past three years. Um, some highlights I want to talk about is that, number one, minimal increases in the operational budget of the town. So this year's general fund appropriation represents only three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars over FY twenty-one. Just a two-point-four percent increase. In, I have it broken down there in the different categories. Uh, in the enterprise accounts, we do see some significant increases underwater and sewer and rubbish. Uh, water and sewer, that two-hundred-thousand-dollar increase, a lot of that comes from, um, the assessment we're charged by Lynn Water Sewer. Uh, the way that that, uh, agreement works is us, Swamp Scott, Lynn and Saugus all pay our percentage of the total amount of water that gets treated by that facility. And when Gorilic Farms, um, came offline, which was the biggest user of the system and was in Lynn, it really spread the, uh, splitting of the total pie up amongst the, all the communities. So as Lynn's percentage went down, Swamp Scott, Saugus and Ha went up. Also, uh, Lynn Water Sewer Treatment Plant is at the end of their operation and maintenance forty-year contract. So with that changeover of a forty-year-old O and M contract comes a new contract which is expecting a significant increase in cost. So they've, they have, um, you know, we've talked about this for a couple of years now. They've told us to prepare from anywhere from a thirty to forty to fifty percent increase. Uh, so that's what, that's where that big increase is coming from in water and sewer. Um, on rubbish or waste trash, uh, that big increase is just, that's a nationwide issue. Um, even potentially worldwide issue where the cost of trash has just skyrocketed. Uh, ever since, um, certain countries, uh, stopped taking the amount of the trash that we, that the United States typically sends over. Uh, it's dramatically changed the market and it's substantially increased the cost of, um, processing trash. So that's trickled down. Every town is experiencing, experiencing it. And we've done a tremendous amount of work with, uh, negotiating our contract with, uh, Waste Management. If you recall, last year we did a one-year deal to try to get over the, um, unsettling market and we feel like we're there and we've negotiated a pretty, a pretty good contract. Our rates compared to our neighbors, uh, is, are extremely competitive. Um, the other big highlight here is we're continuing to fund reserve accounts, which improves the town's bond rating. So, uh, this year we're putting a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars into the stabilization account, which will, if approved, will bring it up to four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Uh, when I first, my first budget, when we talked about the general override, uh, there was only, uh, a hundred thousand dollars in that account. Maybe a hundred and thirty. Uh, so we've put, you know, significant amount of money in, in every budget, uh, since I've been here into stabilization. Uh, the other one is OPEB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits. Uh, we're putting another twenty-five thousand dollars in that, bringing it up to, if approved, seventy-eight thousand. When I, as again, three years ago with the override, we looked at OPEB, we only had about less than ten thousand dollars in that account. Um, both of those accounts are key factors when our bond rating is being, um, calculated. So as the more we put money into those accounts, the better our bond rating is, which produces lower interest rates on borrowings that we have. Um, but it also sets us up for the future. Our goal is to build that stabilization account, uh, or rainy day account so that, you know, we are prepared for any major shortfalls that could occur financially in the future. Um, we're also appropriately paying down our debt to save, save the town long-term costs. Our minimum debt requirement in payments is, uh, three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars less than what we're doing. So we are going above that minimum payment, um, to the tune of three hundred and forty-four thousand. Uh, our total's about one-point-six million in debt. So what we do is we take a look at all the outstanding debt, all the outstanding interest rates that we have. Um, and we pay our minimum amount and then we say, let's try and do a little bit more and let's target those, um, high-interest, long-term rates so that we can pay those principles down and save the town money over time. Um, again, that's another key factor in your bond rating, much like a credit score. When you're, when I talk about bond ratings, think about your own personal credit score. If you are paying down your credit cards, if you're paying down your debt, if you have money in your savings accounts, those are things that are gonna help your credit score. It's the same thing for the town. Um, emphasizing a priority in public health. These are two key items in this year's budget that we're very proud of, especially coming out of, uh, the pandemic. We are emphasizing a new category in our budget that's for public health. In the past, we've had stipends for a public health nurse, a public health inspector and some operational costs that were kind of mixed in with other, you know, inspectional services or Board of Selectmen. Um, this year we've created our own public health account, uh, that is funded at a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, if you added up all those other little bits for public health in the previous years, it only was about twenty-three thousand, four hundred. So while the, while the, um, personnel costs of the health nurses or the health inspector, uh, the hourly rate isn't changing. So we have this appropriation that if we need to use them more so than we have in typical years, especially as we continue to get through the pandemic, we have funds there, uh, in our budget focusing on that. If we don't use them, we, you know, it doesn't get spent. So that's a huge, that's a huge change compared to other years that is, you know, in our mind, extremely important, uh, given the current circumstances. The other piece is public safety. Uh, this budget, uh, restores the position of the full-time fire chief. Again, two years ago, or for the past two years, the fire department has been experimenting, I would say with a, um, working chief model, um, in order to help the town get control of its operational costs, annual operational costs. Um, it has provided some benefits to the town over the past couple of years. Uh, but we see that, you know, truly for the fire department to perform at its highest level and for the management, you know, of a fire department, that's not just fighting fires or answering ambulance calls, but actually, you know, capital planning, fiscal management, um, 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 you know, personnel management. Uh, it really requires a full-time chief that's there every, every day of the week, working with all the different, um, shifts of firefighters in the, in the department. So we are very excited to, to get that, to restore the fire department, get it back to a, uh, full, fully, uh, full-time fire chief. And then last thing I would say is appropriately using free cash. Free cash is, think of free cash like a Christmas bonus. It's essentially the amount of money that, um, either revenue that is above our estimated amount for an upcoming year or, um, expenses that came in less than what we estimated for the current fiscal year. And that delta comes in the form of free cash. The, um, the state ends up certifying it and we get to use it for the upcoming year. But like a Christmas bonus, you can't operate or plan, um, a budget that uses that money on a reoccurring annual basis because you don't know if next year you're gonna get the same bonus. You don't know if you're gonna get the same amount. So what the, uh, state really recommends is that you use that money for one-time expenditures, capital projects or replenish, replenishing other reserves. We are using a hundred percent of our free cash this year for those purposes. In the past, the town has had to dip into free cash to supplement a shortfall in our operating expenses, meaning salaries and things of that nature. We're not doing that. We actually are using it appropriately, um, and you know, you, you tie that in with all the other things, all the other highlights I just mentioned. It means better bond rating, better security, better future, lower interest rates on borrowings, all good things. So, you know, we're extremely proud of this budget. Um, it's, you know, it's definitely, uh, in line with the commitment that we made with the Finance Committee a few years back. And you know, something that, you know, residents should be proud of, um, sometimes it's, you know, it's, it's hard to, uh, hold the line and, and say no on certain requests, um, but it's for the better of the town, the better of the future of the town, financially speaking. Um, I have a question in the chat about asking if the TV screens at the town meeting will, uh, project, um, reworded articles, uh, so if people can see what's, um, what might be, might, might be presented live on the town floor. Uh, there are a couple of things that are gonna be presented on the big screen. Um, uh, so the answer is yes and no. Um, if we get it ahead of time, if it's something that we can load up quickly, um, we maybe, we are doing our best to, to be able to provide that for anything that might need people's, something that's not in the book that people have gotten, we're, we're trying to put that up on the screen for people when that article comes up for discussion. Um, Article seven is the Water and Sewer Enterprise Account. So this, this article is where the town votes on the appropriations to be spent out of the enterprise account. Um, you'll see, you'll see there that it's, it's, the motion's a little bit confusing. This is a question that comes up every year. Um, if you add up the salaries, expenses, capital, ally, debt, emergency reserve, uncollectible, your total is two million, six hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-six. That's how much money is gonna be spent or approved by town meeting to be spent out of the enterprise account. Um, two million, ninety thousand, four hundred and eighteen, uh, dollars comes from money we collect through water sewer bills. Seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars actually is the debt shift, which is collected on your real estate bills and then transferred into the enterprise account. And then two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of that total, two thirty-three seventy-nine, actually gets transferred out of the enterprise account and into the general fund for indirect costs such as, um, employee benefits. So it's a little tricky. It's a little confusing, but that's the, that's the background on it. And water and sewer equipment and paving, the, every year we also include thirty thousand dollars out of the water sewer enterprise account, um, to pay for paving associated with water and sewer repairs. So if we have an emergency break and we have to dig up the street, we utilize this account, um, to pay for the paving of such. Uh, this slide is pretty much all about the rubbish enterprise account. Uh, number one, same thing as the water sewer, it's authorizing the enterprise account and the amount of money we can spend out of it. Article ten is the compost area. Uh, this is something that we increased a couple of years back. Typical historical funding of money from the, uh, rubbish enterprise to be spent towards the compost area uh, has been twenty thousand dollars. But then in FY fourteen and fifteen, essentially the town had to borrow eighty thousand dollars each year, so a hundred and sixty thousand dollars because the compost area got so out of control and so overfull with, um, compost that we had to go and borrow money to clean it out and, 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 um, transfer some of the material out of the compost site. So what we're doing instead is, uh, we're trying to use fifty thousand dollars, a little bit more spread out, few years in a row, so that we can get the, the current overload of materials managed and either transferred out and saving the good stuff, but getting rid of the bad stuff and getting it to a size pile that, um, uh, we can control and then fund back at a twenty thousand dollar level by getting material out of there on an annual basis. So it doesn't fill up over time and then you have a big problem to deal with five years, six years, seven years down the road. Um, Article eleven is recycling carts. Uh, so one thing that we've been talking about with ways to cut costs in our, um, uh, Waste Management Contract and the fees that we get assessed for the, for them to collect our trash and recycling is this movement towards automated collection. Um, we don't feel the town, uh, is fully prepared or ready to limit the amount of trash that somebody can put out by you, the way of, uh, totes, these recycling bins. But we did feel that, um, you know, providing these, these sixty-five gallon and the option of thirty-five for, for people that might, um, elderly that may have trouble moving a sixty-five, uh, was a good way that we could encourage recycling, um, and promote, um, environmental benefits. You know, one of the biggest issues, if anybody who drives around town on Thursday and Friday, when recycling is out and it's always windy on Thursday and Friday, um, a lot of people don't have, they have either the old-style bins or barrels that don't have covers and there's recyclables all over the street. And as an island community, um, those, that products, those, those things find their way into our open spaces or into the ocean, even worse. So these totes are not only gonna provide us some financial benefit and savings on our contract, but they're also going to provide environmental benefits at no cost to the residents. Um, we're using retained earnings, so money that we've collected over the years that's saved in our rubbish enterprise account. Um, originally we were asking for seventy-five thousand dollars out of there, but news, this is hot off the press, just, uh, two days ago, we were, uh, we had put in for a recycling partnership grant. We were awarded twenty-two thousand dollars to use towards the costs of these carts. So what was a seventy-five thousand dollar enterprise, um, retained earnings, um, ask is now more like fifty-three. Uh, so those totes that were fifty-five dollars each are for the town are now only gonna be thirty-five dollars each for the town. So what we will do is, uh, if approved, we'll pull the, we'll use the grant plus the fifty-three from the retained earnings. We'll purchase fourteen hundred of these, um, nice recyclable totes and we will deliver them, uh, to every household. Every, every, um, I guess, uh, trash bill paying unit, um, in the town sometime in July. Next is the Recreation Revolving Account and we're creating another, uh, revolving account. Recreation is something that's on the, on the town meeting warrant every year. Essentially it allows us to put the funds, um, or the revenue generated, uh, by donations or fees into a revolving account and then it's used for the costs of like Park League and tennis and Fourth of July and other things of that nature. So that's a common article. There's nothing new there. That happens every year. Article thirteen are two new revolving accounts that we're putting into the bylaws. This is for the ZBA and the CONCOM. Uh, and there's a spending limit there of ten thousand and twenty thousand respectively. Essentially we have the same, um, same kind of need where of cash flow where we don't know how many CONCOM permits and hearings we're gonna have in a year. We don't know how many Board of Appeal hearings or applications we're gonna have in a year. So it's very tough for us to budget the costs associated with those process, uh, procedures in a town meeting and fully, and have it fully funded. By creating these accounts, when someone applies for a Board of Appeal application or applies for a CONCOM permit, those fees will go into this account and then any costs associated, uh, like for the ZBA to pay for the expenses required for training, processing applications, um, legal notices, newspaper notices, same thing with the CONCOM, consultant fees, expenses. Um, all of that stuff will get paid for out of the revolving accounts. So it's just a different way of, um, managing the cash flow. It's gonna help tremendously for ZBA and CONCOM and for us, uh, to, you know, we can potentially, you know, spend less out of the general fund and it becomes more of a self-funded process. and it becomes more of a self-funded process or entity. I hope I still have everybody's attention. I, I'm looking at the chat, I don't have a ton of questions, um but I'm going to just keep going. Uh, fourteen and fifteen, we talk, I talked about in that highlights of the omnibus budget slide. Uh, we're putting twenty-five thousand in the OPEB, a hundred and twenty-five thousand in stabilization. I have a quick chart there that shows you how much we've done over the last three fiscal years. Um, so I've already talked about that. Article sixteen is paving, um, a hundred thousand dollars for paving. Uh, this is something that we typically borrow a hundred thousand dollars for every year um and we will be using free cash for this purpose. So again, instead of borrowing on an annual basis, we're now using free cash for that one-time occurrence. This article supplements our Chapter ninety funds, which you'll see later in the slideshow. Uh, we have a paving plan, capital plan, that um basically for us to keep our roads at a certain grade all across town, it would, it, it um sets us up to spend around two hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, we get like ninety thousand dollars in Chapter ninety. So with this hundred thousand and that ninety, we're able to accomplish, we're, we're able to stay on track with that paving plan. Article seventeen is the first um capital borrowing article that you'll see in the warrant. Uh, this is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to um purchase a municipal finance software for the town. The annual costs of running a new software are similar to what we pay now, but the upfront cost of purchasing the software is expensive. But once you make that investment, the value that these upgraded softwares bring to the town in managing our financials in a more efficient manner is incredible. Uh, the current system that we have is very slow, sometimes isn't even accurate and you have to triple check or check four times the numbers to make sure that they are producing, you know, a, an account balance that's actually true. Um, this is extremely important. It's just like you running your own checkbook, your own checking account, savings account um or a business doing the same. The town needs this account, needs this software so that we can accomplish the goals that um the residents and the FinCom and the Board of Security that we all want, which is to have a, you know, properly functioning financial management of the town's operating expenses and capital expenses. Um, this is extremely necessary. Uh, like I said, we have, if you, whenever we go and talk to other accountants in other towns and we ta, talk to them about the uh uh program that we're currently running, which is at no fault of anybody, it just happened to be that the old software we had, um, s, the company stopped producing it, stopped updating it. So we were forced into another one that's just really poor. Um, every other town we talked to, every other account we talked to, like can't believe the system that we're working off of and how much, and how, you know, old it is and, and, and poor it is. So this is a big item. This is huge for the town in um upgrading the way that we do business. The next big borrowing article uh is for the police department. This is for communications, radio communications. Uh, the system that the police department is currently using is thirty-plus years old. Uh, they do a great job of maintaining it and, you know, your typical lifespan is more like twenty years old and we're ten-plus years beyond that. Uh, because thankfully, because of the work of Chief Dwyer and um the proper maintenance that he's put into the system. But essentially right now, when we have a police officer on the road in portions of town, he or um she cannot communicate with headquarters in certain areas of town or other officers on the road, um because the system doesn't work. Uh, this is an extreme public safety risk and this a hundred and ninety thousand dollars uh will buy us another thirty years of a system. So um extremely important, you know, very um necessary uh to support our public safety operations. Um, you know, I know it's Nahat and I know a lot of people might think that, you know, not a lot of stuff goes, goes on around here, but um, you know, we've had a lot uh in the past, just in the past year, we had um, you know, car thefts, we had um out-of-town uh, you know, robberies or incidents coming into town. Um, you know, hmm, I, I don't know if people remember, we had a uh, a um nighttime um essential police chase that occurred on foot and we had to call in state police uh helicopter to, to help us, you know. A, a lot of stuff occurs in the town that you may not hear, you may not see. Our public, our police department does a tremendous job and they are a legitimate police department that deals with legitimate issues and to have them stranded on the road without being able to communicate with headquarters is a significant problem. Uh, so that's the second big um borrowing article. Uh, the third is DPW Capital. Um, we have two significant needs this year in DPW. One is a water utility truck, one is a backhoe. Um, the backhoe, you know, we use that for um emergency repairs, water sewer, um, you know, pretty much anything that requires us to dig in the road or in, or in the um, in the ground. Uh, we also use it uh in snow and ice operations uh to put salt into the uh, into the spreaders so that we can um keep the roads uh safe and not icy. Um, and the utility truck, you know, that, that truck houses all of our water sewer equipment um or tools so that we can quickly address any type of water sewer break, which we happen to have a decent amount of. Uh, so these, both of these are very important. We've actually um, Zach, our DPW Super Done In has done a tremendous job working with um the contractor to find a good rate on both of these vehicles and um, you know, hopefully we get that one passed too. Article twenty, uh, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. Uh, this was, you know, the informational session that happened two weeks, two weeks ago. Uh, the Coast Guard design recommendation is to sell the property uh to pay off the outstanding debt of one point eight million. Um, they, their recommendation is to clear the land and subdivide it, subdivide it into twelve buildable lots with um each lot having a floor area ratio of twenty-five percent and um a deed restriction that you cannot combine the lots. Um, and then retaining property that overlaps a golf course, the Heritage Trail and the Fort Ruckman Access Road. Um, that map is something they presented the other day that shows you, um, the orange is the current homes on the property, the blue is what the twenty-five uh floor area ratio homes would look like. Um, Article twenty-one, community preservation. Like I said, last year we did not get through community preservation articles, so you have two years' worth of items on this list. Uh, a lot of great things happening with community preservation, a lot of recreational, a lot of housing, a lot of um historical preservation, stuff that has been on the shelf for so long and, you know, with these approvals, we're going to be able to, the town's going to look un, you know, the recreational areas and our, our uh um, public properties are going to look great. Um, so I'll just run through a few of them. So Nahat Little League, uh, they're looking for funds for um backstop and fencing improvements. American Legion's looking for funds for a uh sign uh out front of the lifesaving station. Flash Road Tennis and Basketball Courts, uh, this is to supplement a previous amount that was authorized uh which will um completely reconstruct the Flash Road Tennis and Basketball Courts in the plate, in the location that they are. It also includes a pickleball court, um, pick, pickleball lines in the, in the tennis courts, something that hasn't been uh rebuilt in like thirty years. Um, a major five hundred thousand dollar borrowing for capital needs of the library, the town hall and the Green Lawn Cemetery. We've lumped those together because a lot of the uh contractors and the type of work that they would be doing is similar for each one of these properties. So um, you know, to, to try to um get a better price and a better deal, having them work on all three at the same time, uh, you know, may prove to be, to benefit the town. Um, twenty-one F is actually a debt payment for, for previous borrowing approved um a couple of years ago for the library uh terrace work, which um if you, I'm sure many people have seen it, it looks unbelievable. It looks great over there. Uh, twenty-one G is the Ellingwood Chapel. There's some envelope, uh continued envelope repairs uh to do with uh water leaking into the chapel. Dory Club is improving their gangway at the wharf. Uh, twenty-one um I and J are both the Housing Authority. A lot of those properties uh need a significant amount of work, whether it be windows or siding or roofing. Uh, the town or CPC um hasn't, not by fault of CPC, but there just hasn't been a lot of money going towards the Housing Authority or towards housing out of CPC. And the Housing Authority has now hired a great um executive director uh who puts forward these great projects and that's another great um grant that's in front of the town. Twenty-one K is Bailey's Hill and Fort Ruckman Park. This is to restore the open space and trails that go through the area. Uh, twenty-one L is lowland uh softball fields, backstop, fencing and benches. If you recall, the women's softball field got a new backstop a couple of years ago. Um, the uh men's field, uh, the fencing in the whole, in the entire field, benches for both men and women uh would be featured in this article, which is, you know, somewhat ties into our efforts to beautify the area ahead of the wall that heals, which is coming in July in that space. Twenty-one M is Town Hall ADA improvements. Uh, this is the um, you know, ADA access from outside into the town hall on the first, on the ground floor would be over at the entrance to the council and aging area. And then on the next floor up, it would be the ramp that's in the side parking lot and, you know, also push-button entrances, um, so proper signage, other things of that nature. Twenty-one N Little Nahat Playground, this is the playground that, you know, probably the oldest playground in town other than the one that sits behind the Coast Guard housing. Uh, and it's right on the main road. It's been neglected for years. Um, twenty-four thousand there to put some new equipment in there and we have some FEMA funds to supplement that for resurfacing. Twenty-one O is Spring Road Basketball Court. This is right at the compost site. It's short dollars for um, you know, just new hoops and basically a painted surface, a skim coat. Uh, the, the court itself is in pretty good shape, so it doesn't need new paving, but a skim coat of paint or epoxy plus new hoops and then also some fencing there uh to separate, you know, the compost site uh visually from the basketball court. Um, twenty-one P, Q, R, S, T are all reverting unexpected, unexpended funds from previously appropriated years that are no longer necessary, bringing them back into the CPC account. Twenty-one U is a typical revenue set aside. And then twenty-one V, of course, is the one point five million dollar borrowing for the purposes of eminent domain. Uh, Article twenty-two, again, you know, eminent domain had a uh, a lengthy info session last week. Um, what I have here is the language of the article and the map uh that is printed in the book. Uh, I'm not, again, you know, this has gotten a lot of conversation on already, so I'm not going to spend much time on it tonight. Um, let me check, let's see if we have questions. Are drawings available for the Dory Club Gangway Project? I don't think there are drawings of, I'm, I'm not sure. Um, it's a question for the Dory Club. I don't think there are yet because this money is actually, I believe, to hire an engineer uh to study the proposal that they're putting in place. So I don't think there's drawings yet, but I could be wrong. Um, other than the eminent domain borrowing, do these amounts fit within their available funds? Yes. Um, well, all fit in the, all of the um CPC, let me go back. So all of these amounts fit uh for, if you take out five hundred thousand dollar borrowing and the one point five million dollar borrowing and add up the rest of those um expenses, that fits within the available funds of the CPC. Uh, the borrowings um, you know, are kind of outside of that. What you're setting yourself up for is um payments to that debt in future years, like twenty-one F. So library debt of fifty-five thousand two hundred, that was a four hundred thousand dollar borrowing approved in a previous um town meeting and this is a debt payment towards that bond. The five hundred thousand is a ten-year bond. The question was, how, how long is the um, the bond on the five hundred thousand? It's a ten-year bond? Trying to get my mouse to work here. Um, Brendan, I see your questions too about responses to your other questions. I'll follow up with you. Um, I'll try to follow up with you tomorrow on that. Um, Article twenty-three is MWRA borrowing. Um, so every year we, well, for many years previous now, we've put this on the town meeting warrant. Uh, MWRA offers their towns that are associated with them a zero percent interest loan. So we put in for this, this would authorize us to borrow up to two hundred thousand dollars through their program at zero interest. So, you know, to be casual about it, as long as they're offering zero interest loans, we want to have the authority to take advantage of that. Um, because it's a great opportunity for the town to, you know, borrow to accomplish the, a number of uh water capital needs that we have. And I just highlighted some of the recently completed projects that we've used MW, previously approved MWRA borrowing for. Uh, Howe Road, we increased the six-inch main to an eight-inch. Furbish Road actually had about an inch and a half main. That's, it's, it was amazing that it was that small, one, an inch and a half main, inch and three quarters. We increased that to an eight-inch main. Walton Road, six inch to eight inch and we connected it, we connected Walton Road to Forty Steps, which was eliminated like the longest dead end of a water main that we had in town. Um, and Mills Terrace, six inches to eight inches as well. So both, all those projects not only improved water quality for the residents, but it also improved um our firefighting abilities. So in some places we were able to improve uh the um flow of water to existing hydrants. In some places it allowed us to install new hydrants. Uh, Article twenty-four, wastewater bylaw amendment. Uh, so the, the full um, the full length of this bylaw amendment is in the back of your FinCom books. I forget which appendix it is. I can tell you, um, it's appendix. Hold on. Fifteen, page one eighty-four in your book. Um, it's also available in the uh clerk's office. What this is, what this has to do with, and so the state, Mass DEP, and an administrative consent order that's been placed on the town pressures the town to introduce a local bylaw, and this isn't just Nahat, this is meant, you know, all the state municipalities uh are being pressured to in, introduce local bylaws. are being pressured to introduce local bylaws that get at the infiltration and inflow issue of sewer systems. And inflow and infiltration is essentially unauthorized input of some, you know, water or sewer into the sewer system. Sometimes that's just because we have broken leaky pipes, so you have groundwater getting into it. Sometimes it's when we have a flood and there's floodwater getting into the, through the manholes because they're not watertight. Sometimes that's because there's illegal, illegal connections in private property of either downspouts or sump pumps being entered into the sewer system. The problem with that is when we have rain events, we, our volume of water that gets sent through our sewer system and to a wastewater treatment center doubles. So you have twice as much pressure on your system all of a sudden during rainwater systems, you know, causing pressure or causing harm to your system because it's sudden ramp up of, of flow. Plus, you're paying to treat stormwater or groundwater that doesn't need to be treated. So this bylaw essentially is geared towards regulating those illegal or unintended introductions of non-sewer water into the sewer system. All right, I got some questions here. What does it mean to the average citizen? A lot of definitions are changing, but there is no context of what the change of verbius means. What is definition of large development? What does this mean to the average citizen? Well, number one, we don't have a current bylaw that says it's illegal for you, or is there, there's no enforcement and there's no penalty for people illegally plumbing their downspout or sump pump into the sewer system. So for one, it puts something on our bylaws that says you're not allowed to do that. You know, does that mean that we're going to be inspecting people's basements? No, but, you know, it's certainly something that is going to be looked at when you're dealing with, you know, building permits or code or things of that nature. What is the definition of large development? Dan Scrip, are you on?
I am on. The definition of large development, let me look into this a bit more for a second. First of all, the entire language is in the clerk's office, so you can get it there. It's, it's no secret that you can evaluate all this language. And the large, so when you were referring to the large, oh, I see. Okay, I see here. So the four, the four to one ratio, the four to one I and I ratio applies to the large development projects, but in this case, the only project that would apply would be Northeastern. There's no other project nearly that size that the flow ratio would apply. In fact, when we first, we're going back and forth with the state on these potential bylaws, we, we didn't really see the need for the four to one ratio until we looked at the Northeastern project a bit closer because they had such a high flow rate that would require this four to one I and I. So rest assured that it won't apply to your house. No, no, not at all. It won't even apply to, you know, the larger apartment complexes in town. It really would only apply to Northeastern, and this is not a target Northeastern. This is statutory. This thing, we have to do this. This is part of the regulations that the state has passed over the past few years. So this is not discretionary. We are bound to do this.
If you flip, if you flip to page 187 in your finance committee book, that's where it talks about the four to one II removal plan for large redevelopment projects. And the definition there says all new or extended sewer connections with design flows exceeding 15,000 gallons per day. So that's never going to be a residential property. Okay, so quickly running back, it looks like the, on that question about the Dory Club CPC application, it is for the design fabrication installation of a davit to lift the ramp up when a storm is approaching and potentially through inter-season. And so the, the design or the, or the description of what it's going to look like hasn't been created yet. Okay, article twenty-five. I already got questions on article twenty-five. This is to see if the town will vote to amend the police bylaw from deleting the words a minimum of 300 yards offshore and replacing it with a minimum of 600 yards from the mean low water line. So this has to do with the discharge of firearms. Currently, our local bylaw says 300 yards offshore. This, if approved, would say 600 yards from mean low water line. The mean low water line is the standard point of reference when dealing with coastal regulation. Offshore is really broad and not clear as to where that point starts from. The the basis of this argument, or basis of this article is that, you know, we've had a lot of arguments presented to the town about conflict of recreational opportunities in this area. You know, we have a lot of kite boarders. We have a lot of fisherman, we have a lot of other recreational activity happening within that 600 yard space. And so it's a public safety issue that's been brought to the town. Has the fire rescue personnel been asked if the increase in distance from shore will adversely impact response time to individuals who may need assistance? You know, we, we've, we've spoken generally, we haven't really gotten into like the specifics about this article, but you know, our fire personnel, 600 yards from the mean low watermark or 300 yards from offshore doesn't make a big difference in their response time or their ability to do their, to do their job as ocean rescue. How does doubling of the distance increase safety? So again, the, a lot of the issues that were raised to the town is the conflict of other recreational activity happening in the same space. My understanding, only shotguns can be used for hunting in the waters surrounding Nahat. Can you confirm this? The type of weapon used for legal hunting is determined by the state. It's not determined by our local bylaws, so I would defer you to Division of Fish and Wildlife. And has there been any incidents in Nahat where a firearm discharge 300 yards offshore has caused property damage or injury? No, I don't think so. Article twenty-five proposed 600 yards from low tide mark would basically shut off all activities within Lynn Harbor. Is Lynn aware of this? I would have to check that. I don't know if that, if the, if that's correct or not. Lynn is not aware of it, or they may be aware of it. I'm not sure. But, you know, this article is a local bylaw. It's affects, you know, it's measured from our low tide mark. You know, how it impacts activity in Lynn Harbor. I'm not really sure if the 600 yards would get there. It's a good question. All right. Article twenty-six, snow removal sidewalks. Again, we have a, you know, whenever we have storms, we have a lot of sidewalks in town that don't get, the snow does not be, does not get removed from the sidewalks in front of folks' homes. And we have a lot of, we always have a lot of calls and questions and concerns from residents about not having the ability to safely walk on the sidewalk after a snowstorm and they end up having to walk into the street. Well, the town has a sidewalk snow removal plan. We do remove snow on certain sidewalks and we prioritize them based on where they are in relationship to, you know, a, the school, nursing home, fire department, police department, town hall, long stretches of town-owned property like Short Beach, Tudor Beach. But there's a lot of other sidewalks in town that get, that don't get done. It's pretty common for other municipalities to have this bylaw. In fact, Dan, you could probably confirm that this bylaw is actually drafted based off of Swamp Scott's?
Yeah, we looked at Swamp Scott, our neighbors', potential, or sorry, existing bylaws as well as other towns. And in fact, we modeled a lot of this after that. And the fact remains is that actually they have a higher fine. But again, at the day, this is not about generating revenue. This is about keeping the sidewalks clear as best as we can. It's really all that is. So the fact that there's any fines involved at all is really not the purpose.
Yeah, we also added subsection C where the Board of Selectmen can provide waivers for people who are disabled or elderly or other special circumstances that, you know, may prevent them the ability to get out there and remove the snow from their sidewalk. So for the most part, this is more of, you know, getting it on the books, getting people to, to help their neighbors and their, and the, and the other residents in town by removing the snow in front of their homes. But like Dan said, it's not so much a, a money grab or something for the town to try to, you know, draw up a major source of revenue. Article twenty-seven and twenty-eight has to do with short-term rentals, Airbnb's, VRBO's, HomeAway. We have, according to Division of Local Services, there are 22 registered short-term rentals in town. The state allows towns to adopt three local taxes. One is the meal stacks, which the town adopted two years ago. Two is short-term rentals. Three is marijuana. Both short-term rental and marijuana are on this year's warrant. It allows us to tax at a rate of 6%, the total amount of rent for each occupancy. We, you know, based on, on average, which is, a lot of this is based off of the last, last year's, which is somewhat low because of COVID. But on average, the local option tax would produce $414 at a single percentage point. And if we adopted the 6%, which is what's being proposed, it'd be $2,400 a month or $30,000 a year on average. And likely that Nahat residents aren't renting homes from other Nahat residents. The source of this, of these funds are from non-residents. So people who are coming to town, renting town property, you know, town private property in town would be charged this local tax through the process of renting something on Airbnb or VRBO or HomeAway. So it actually, you know, it doesn't, it's not charged to the homeowner. It's actually processed through whatever program you're using to advertise and rent your property on. Article twenty-eight would create a bylaw advisory committee that would propose regulations for the town to consider at a future town meeting. So things to consider there is, you know, parking issues, trash issues, building code. You know, you want to make sure that as much as the town might be able to, that if homes that are being rented, you know, have working fire alarms, have proper egress, you know, there's a number of different things that this committee, you know, will be able to take a look at and provide recommendations to the town. Article twenty-nine and thirty have to do with the third local tax option. There's a lot of confusion amongst town about the intent of these articles. In 2016, question four on the, on the ballot was to legalize recreational marijuana. The town in Nahat voted yes for that, on that question. 1,260 to 1,081. Because we voted yes, the state law says that any municipality that voted in favor of that ballot question cannot prohibit those establishments from being in the town. The most you can do is limit the number of establishments to 20% of the number of package stores in a municipality. Now, we only have one package store in the, in Nahat, so therefore 20% is one. You'd have to have 10 in order to get to two. So the first article twenty-nine, what, what the state law allows you to do is A, you can adopt a tax and B, you can create regulations. So the first article twenty-nine is to adopt a 3% tax on marijuana product sales. That would happen in the town. Obviously, if no establishment gets created in the town in Nahat, we would not collect any revenue through that tax. And then article thirty is creating the zoning bylaw amendments. Now, these are zoning bylaw amendments. So this article has been submitted to the planning board. They've gone through their typical zoning public process. They've had multiple meetings and they're required to report, to provide a report and recommendations at town meeting. That report is already on the website. They are recommending some amendments. The Board of Selectmen, myself, Dan Scrip, we've all seen those amendments. We're in favor of those amendments. So those will be presented at town meeting. I encourage you to go to nahat.org. Either you can, if you go right on the homepage, there's annual town meeting information. There's a link there that for the planning board's report. That will also be printed and handed out at town meeting. You want to take a look at, you know, some of the recommendations that they've put together. The other part of the state law that it allows the town to do under regulations, not only is limit the amount of establishments that can happen in town, but also regulate the location of those establishments. And I should also state that it requires an establishment to have a community host agreement in a public meeting. The marijuana industry is exploding. It's extremely lucrative. The, there are very large firms working on behalf of these businesses and they are shopping municipalities around the state to find towns that don't have a tax and don't have any bylaws. We all know that Nahat, you know, having a business in Nahat is difficult because we're not a through traffic town. But when it comes to the marijuana industry, you know, the fact if we don't have a tax or we don't have a bylaw, we become somewhat interesting for that industry to come into town. So, you know, do we expect someone to knock on our door immediately or to have two or three marijuana establishments in the next five, 10 years? No, we don't. But we feel it's important that we get ahead of that and we put a tax and a, and a regulation on the books so that we are not any more restrictive, but at the same level of restriction that our neighbors are up, you know, our neighboring communities have on their, on their books. So I got a few questions coming in on this one, Dan.
Okay.
Has the town been approached by any individuals, business or entity expressing interest in opening a marijuana business in town? Yes. We did receive an email from one of those large firms in Boston asking, you know, if we're accepting applications, if we have any regulations on the books. That came in back in January or February, and that's when we felt it was necessary to dive into this issue and see what the town could do. Has the town performed any cost analysis to justify the 3% rate? There's presently litigation where marijuana businesses are contesting the community fee rate. No, we haven't done any cost analysis on that because again, we don't have any thing to base it off of. We don't know, you know, we don't have any businesses in town yet.
Tony, I can, I can weigh in on that.
Sure.
I think someone might be confusing that with a computer. I think someone might be confusing that with a computer, community impact fee, which is not the same. This is a statutory rate, so it's really not contestable at this point on retail sales. What I think the question. Might actually be looking into is the impact fee that is part and parcel to the host community agreement. Uh, and there might be some litigation regarding that. Absolutely. I'd expect that sort of thing. Um, and that would be in addition to the three percent that we see here in Article twenty-nine. And that addition would be related to things like, um, police details, extra parking or anything else that might. Um, the extra traffic in the area. Um, so my, my guess is that litigation does not revolve. Around the statutory rate, but rather the impact fee that is totally separate than the statutory fee.
Okay. Um. What efforts has the town gone to in order to justify the three percent rate? Um, the three percent rate is the option presented to us by the state. So it's not a rate that we created.
No.
Um, that's what, you know, as a town, you have the option, the town, the state gives you the authority to. Um, implement a three percent.
Yeah, we, we could implement a two percent rate, but the statutory gives us the authority for three percent. So why not, why not go for that?
Mm-hmm. Um, Article thirty, why is bylaw limiting to a single marijuana establishment? So, so like I said before, that's the, um. The most, because we voted yes, the most we can do is limit the number of establishments to twenty percent of the number of package stores. So i.e. we have one package store, we can limit it to one marijuana establishment.
To, to expand on that, Tony, marijuana establishments aren't necessarily the same as treatment centers, right? They're, they're, they're two separate things. So pursuant to the statute, we could limit the amount of marijuana retailers, right? And other marijuana establishments and also MTCs or marijuana treatment centers. So we theoretically, we can have one of each of these three. Practically speaking, that doesn't even make sense here in the hunt. But that's what the statute and the regulations allow at the moment. Um, but again, practically speaking, given the amendments that the planning board i- are seeking. There would only be able to be any of these places, um, in a B-one area, which includes things like tides. Um, captains, um, and that's pretty much it. Other than that, we're either R-one, R-two or B-two. And they don't really, they wouldn't apply to this. So we, we can, again, limit the location of these.
Does limiting, does limiting to a single marijuana establishment give case for legal action? By a business that was unable to secure the single available allocation?
I don't understand the question. Um, this is.
Limiting it to, does limiting it to one?
No, that's statutory. That comes right out of the statute. It's like, like you said, it's twenty percent of the packy store licenses.
Right.
And we only have one. And we've, we, and we haven't had more than one, I think. I checked with town hall, I think in like twenty years, we haven't had more than one. So, um, there's really no. Packy, packy store licenses, right? So we, which is to say takeaway, like you, 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 you buy, um, you know, a six-pack from. Um, can, uh, uh, Captain's Convenience or Nahat Convenience and you'll walk away. That's a packy store. That's a takeaway license. And as long as we limit the number to no more than twenty percent, or at least twenty percent, then we're well within our rights. Pursuant to the statutes and we're not even close to that. In fact, it's, it's, we're rounding up to one, if you can imagine that.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Uh, given the limited parking in town, the only practical location for a business would be in Little Nahat, since there are established parking lots. Does the town have any concerns of locating a marijuana establishment adjacent to a large public beach? Where consumption of marijuana is prohibited, similar to alcohol? Um, you know, it's a good point. It's a great question. Um, but think about the practicality of that, you know. Whether you have a package store or a marijuana store right next to a beach or a couple of streets away. You can't control where someone's going to take that product and consume it. Obviously, we have rules in place that say you're not allowed to smoke marijuana or drink alcohol on the beach. Um, we have those rules in place, but practically speaking, you know, is it a concern? Yes. But can we really control that? No. And that's where our B-one districts are. Um, you know, you, you can't really get that far away from a beach in town, so.
Yeah, yeah, no. But Tony, that would be part of the, the host community agreement. That's where. Uh, I, that's a great question in terms of enforcement, but we would put that back on the establishment, say like, you know, we're going to put this on you. You need to enforce that your folks don't do bad things essentially. So that's where that comes in. That's a very strong. Uh, mechanism for the towns around the Commonwealth to, to use. So it's, it's a good question and the way we would do that is to. You know, we, we, we put provisions in the host agreement that said if, if something happens where. You know, we're finding folks on Long or Short Beach, well, in this case, I guess it'll be Long Beach. Um, you know, we're, you know, there were mechanisms, we will put mechanisms in place, we're going to shut you down or do whatever is required.
All right. So I'm going to move on, but I just want to reiterate that there could, there's been confusion about these two articles about. You know, the, the point of them is to encourage marijuana establishments in town. And I would say it's not so much that, but it's more so putting us at the same. You know, level as our neighboring communities and not making us any more enticing of a location. For one or multiple marijuana establishments. Um, okay, thirty-one is a veteran tax work off abatement. We have. Currently a senior work off abatement program in town. This would create a veterans' tax work off abatement, so. Um, if you are a veteran and you meet the certain criteria, you could actually. Uh, work for the town a certain amount of hours and it would make, and it would, um. Make you eligible for fifteen thousand dollar, fifteen hundred dollars off of your local property tax. Uh, that's presented to us from Veteran Services. Uh, the senior deferred property tax interest presented to us from the Board of Assessors, so the Assessors Department. To see the town vote to reduce the rate of interest that accrues on property taxes deferred by eligible seniors. So you have to meet a certain criteria. Um, if you have deferred property taxes. The interest rate on that deferred property tax would be, if approved, reduced from four percent to two and a half percent. Um, Article thirty-three and thirty-four are, uh, the sale of town-owned land. Um, th- this is a hundred and ninety-two square feet of property. Uh, very small portion of Antigua Way that, you know, essentially the way it's on the map. Versus the way it is in real life is creates a title issue for the resident there. They've come to the town to ask for relief, um, so that they can, um, solve that problem. Essentially what they're trying to do is purchase. An easement of Antigua Way where their current steps are. Um, you see a map there, they will get up and explain this. Um, part of the process is to discontinue, is, is that the town actually has to discontinue a portion of Antigua Way. In order to sell a portion of Antigua Way. Um, again. I will say that in real life and practicality, it doesn't change what Antigua Way looks like. It's more so making a change on a map and on the legal deed and the documents. Article thirty-five, uh, tree bylaws. Uh, this is a requirement to become a tree city. Uh, becoming a tree city provides financial benefit to the town for the purchase of trees. It's, uh, essentially adopts the state rules regarding trees, uh, into our local bylaws. It also creates a task force, um. That the, and like the full, I believe, let's see, what? The full description of the tree bylaw or the full text of it is in. Appendix eleven, page one thirty-two of your books. So you can read the full, uh, text there. Um. Dan, do you have any other comments on that?
Um, no, just, oh, just one. Uh, that task force reports to Zach. And makes recommendations to him. Uh, they have no independent authority alone, but they are helpful, very helpful. In dealing with, with, with public shade, not, not every tree in town, but public shade trees, so. Um, this has been pushed by Vipatic, so I'm sure she'll be up there at town meeting and, you know, making her argument in this regard.
Okay. Uh, Article thirty-six, um. In nineteen sixty-four, the town voted to accept section twenty A, which has to do with our, um. Parking violations, uh, the, um, enforcement or the, the actual fee. That's charged for a parking violation. Um, however, uh. There's section twenty A and a half, which is the updated section, uh, that is more commonly used. And used by Nahat, but actually, uh, needs to be voted and accepted by the town, a town meeting. It doesn't change the amount that we're currently charging for parking violations. It just brings the town up to, um. It, it, how do I say this, Dan? It brings.
More, more modern. It, it, we, we, like I said, we adopted the first one in sixty-four, but it's time to get more, more up to date as to what's going on. And, you know, to, to Michelle Campano's point, uh, you know, a few weeks ago, um, there's more to be done in terms of maybe. Um, we also adopted back in the day, a stat, the statute that allowed the selectman to pick out spots. Where towing would be appropriate. So I think there's a part of that moving forward. Um, to try to stem the, um, parking issues that we here in Nahat have. You know, every July, August, June, July and August. So that's, that's what this is all about.
Uh, thank you. A more modern statute to adopt. I couldn't think of the word. Um, Article thirty-seven, I mentioned this earlier, this is our chapter ninety funds. We get about ninety thousand dollars. This gets used towards paving. Supplemented by the hundred thousand dollars that we put in ourself, allows us to stay on track with our, um. Paving plan. Article thirty-eight is a general bylaw amendment regarding, um, non-compulsible bags. Uh, this is actually, was brought to us by a, uh, high school, Nahat high school student. Max McDonough. Um, he will be at town meeting, he will present this, uh, this article, he'll talk about it. Um, essentially what it does is it bags non, it bans non-compulsible bags. Um, that, you know, takeout bags that are used by convenience stores or takeout windows. Um. And if you take a look at this map, this is something that he brought to the town. Uh, we are like one of the only coastal. Communities that doesn't have this, um, local bylaw. Uh, you know, again, these plastic materials, um, you know, find their way into the ocean, find their way into the open space. They take a hundred years to break down in natural elements, sometimes never fully break down. Uh, so the, uh, the concept here is environmental benefit. Um, this article is. Again, if you take a look at your book, this will be appendix fourteen, page one eighty. All right, we're getting close to the end. Um, Article thirty-nine, a lot to consume here, but bear with me. Um, Article forty is a, um, citizen petition. That was presented last year. All citizen petitions that are on this year's town meeting are not, uh, did not get taken up last year. So, uh, they are bringing, they're put on the, on the warrant this year. Um, Article forty, we've been working very close with the neighborhood, um, of the Lowlands area. About the intent of that article and the goals of improving the, the drainage. And we've, there's a lot of limitation in the, in the drafting of the citizen petition, the way that that language is put together. Specifically for a certain project that would unlikely be permissible by the state. Um, and there's not enough funds for it. So we've actually, you know, we've done a great job of. Coming together with the neighborhood, really focusing on the different issues and intent, uh, or goals of the neighborhood and the town. Because, you know, solving or improving the drainage issues in the Lowlands benefits. You know, all of Big Nahat, because if Nahat Road or the Lowlands area gets flooded, it cuts off. Um, the rest of town to the mainland. Uh, so there's, there's a big issue there. Um, what I'm showing here in this flow chart is that there's actually three different stormwater problems that we have. We have daily drainage, so that's from, that's your water table, that's your groundwater, that's your rainwater. There's flood prevention, so that's preventing stormwater floods. Uh, from coming, you know, from water, seawater coming over and into the land, the lowland area. And then there's flood recovery. So when we have a flood, how quickly are we responding? How quickly are we pumping that water out? Um, on daily drainage, there is a existing eighteen-inch outfall pipe that is currently not operating. There's a roadway stormwater system, um, that, you know. All of our roadway stormwater systems need a, uh, attention throughout town, but same in this area. And then there's the drainage ditch that goes from Ward Road and takes, um, water daily. And then of course in a flood and flows towards the, um. Golf course, eventually making its way down through the Heritage Trail of Compost Site, across Flash Road to the golf course, to Bear Pond. Where there's a gravity outfall pipe and, um, manual pumps, um, that take that stormwater. It, it actually, that system actually naturally filters that water and then it pumps it out into the ocean. Uh, flood prevention, Short Beach Dune, we've been working with the MVP, um, program on an action grant. CZM, um, we applied for community project funding. Uh, essentially to improve the resiliency of Short Beach Dune. The area of the Lowlands had, uh, when it gets flooded from stormwater, it comes from Short Beach side. And it comes from Castle roadside. The issue or the limitation from. Improving resiliency or prevention on the Castle roadside is that that coast is completely private property, private homes. So the town really can't do much to improve the resiliency there. But on the Short Beach side, which is a nice, beautiful dune, um. What we can do is improve the resiliency of that by, A, filling in. Um, and leveling the access points so that they don't act as, um, you know, funnels for water to come through. Basically bringing the entire height level to one slot, one height. And then obviously, you know, increasing the overall height of the total dune would be helpful as well. Um. Flood recovery, when a flood comes in, um, how quickly are we getting water out? So, you know, improving the drainage ditch through dredging, a lot of the work that we've done over the past. Um, the past winter has already proved to be extremely beneficial for the town. Um, the, the amount of water that's in the golf course, uh, it's flowing better through those. Uh, ditch system to the bear, to Bear Pond. And in the heavy rains or floods, or even we had a water break in the Lowlands area. The flow of water from Ward Road through the ditch system to the golf courses improved tremendously. On the little bit of work that we've done in the past winter for like pennies on the dollar. Uh, by utilizing mosquito control and their permitting ability and the money that we already contribute to them. Through our state aid, um, we're able to get a lot of work done that way. So, uh, we've, we used the twenty eighteen Warren article, uh, to explore the eighteen out, eighteen-inch outfall pipe. Kind of hit a dead end there. And then in order to prepare us for a potential like nasty winter after twenty eighteen. We went and bought two eight-inch diesel pumps that pump like four thousand gallons per minute. Um, it's incredible the work that they do and they've already, we've already utilized just one. Um, over the winter when we had the entire golf course flooded and the ditch that was in, that's at Ward Road completely full. In one day with one pump, uh, for twenty-four hours, barely even above idle. It, it dewatered the entire system. So we're already making extreme progress, but there's more work to be done. So the eighteen-inch outfall pipe, um, needs to be reopened. But before we can get there, we really need to do a thorough engineering, um, study and exploration about. You know, the permitting of that. When it comes to, um. When it comes to, um, outfall pipes of stormwater today, it's very, very difficult to do those types of things because of the new EPA standards of water filtration and things of that sort. Grandfathered pipes, however, have a little bit of an easier road to, to, um, either restore, rehab, um, re-operate. So our goal here with this $100,000, we have a quote from a, um, very good stormwater engineer who came out and took a look for about $60,000 to basically get that project to shovel ready. So engineer it, design it, bid docs, um, permitting process with CZMDP, um, all the, all of the above. Um, so we could use 60,000 of this 100 towards that. The remaining 40, we would use towards either improving the, um, stormwater drain system or most likely improve, continuing to make the improvements that we already have on the drainage ditch. That's not just helping the lowlands area, but helping stormwater, um, recovery in general for the town. So if 39, uh, the neighborhood is on board, I think I'm safe to say that the neighborhood is on board with Article 39. If 39 passes, Article 40 would, would be withdrawn. Um, this is my last slide. Article 40, Article 41, Article 42 are all citizen petitions. Um, you know, so for me, I don't feel, um, compelled to provide, um, background or information on those articles. The citizens will stand up at town meeting and talk about the intent of them. I think they're fairly straightforward, that you can read the articles and understand the intent of what they're doing. Um, as I mentioned, 39, um, has to do with 40. If 39 passes, 40 gets, uh, withdrawn. 41 is a vote to repeal in its entirety, the Wetlands Protection Bylaw adopted at the August 27, 2018 special town meeting. Uh, you know, so essentially if it were to, if it were to pass, it would repeal the Wetlands bylaw. If it were to fail, the Wetlands bylaw would stay in place. Um, Article 42, Citizen Petition Keeping Animals Bylaw. Just take a look and read through that. Essentially, it's limiting the number of pets. Um, there is some, uh, setback issues there that I believe they've worked with, um, town council to, because that might trigger a zoning issue and a planning board review that might get changed on the floor. But, you know, the, the other details of that article, uh, just take a look and read it, read it and, you know, be prepared to ask questions, you know, at town meeting if you have any. Um, and Article 43 is Continuing Committees. So that is your standard article that's, uh, in the book every year. And it's, um, continuing committees that have a one years, one year, um, establishment. Uh, and on an annual basis, we continue them again. You know, committees that are in our bylaws, that are, have longer than one year standing, that don't need to be renewed, aren't going to be there. Um, and that's it. Those are all the articles. Um, a couple of questions in the chat. Let me stop my share. Um, will town meeting be available on Zoom like last year? Many people in town have cut the cord and do not have access to cable channels on which the meeting is being carried. Yes, it will be, uh, streamed through YouTube, which will likely get linked to our Facebook account. It'll also be, like you said, available on the web, on the local TV channels. Um, uh, Channel 8, Channel 45, whatever you're watching right now, if you're at home looking at the TV. Um, that's, uh, I did, there are some questions in here about Article 40. Um, again, I would, I would speak to the citizen petition, the, the lead petitioner of that article for those types of questions if it's not clearly written in the article. Um, they should be able to, uh, provide responses to you. Uh, so I don't have any other questions. If anybody on here has any other questions, um, you know, please feel free to write them in the chat. I want to thank you all for joining us. Um, I want you to, uh, um, I encourage you to attend town meeting. You know, wear a mask, wear a jacket. Uh, I should have said that at the beginning, so if anybody jumped off already. You know, the tent got put up today. I went down there. It's supposed to be 70, 60. You know, it's always windy down there and it gets, and it, it is a little cold under the tent. So, you know, bring a jacket that if it does get chilly under there, you stay warm. And if it doesn't, you can always take it off. So, um, that's, uh, that's everything. Dan, thank you for being on the call with me and helping me out with a couple of those articles.
Happy help.
Everyone have a great night. We'll see you, uh, either tomorrow or we'll see you this weekend.